Substitute city clerk? Temporary city clerk? Were we -- acting city clerk?
Deputy city clerk.
Deputy city clerk, okay. Now that we got that figured out, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
It is Commissioner Finkhauser's turn to do the pledge and the invocation.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As power hits, dear heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us today during our meeting. We ask that you bless those in attendance, be with our first responders, not only in our community but all over America. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? None being, it will stand as approved. Public comment, this is a time in the meeting that we allow people to come forward on bringing us anything that has nothing on the agenda. We give you five minutes. Please come forward and state your name. Welcome.
Everyone, it's afternoon.
Afternoon, yeah.
Commissioners?
There you go.
But they can hear you online.
My name is Pedro Rodriguez. If you need to know me. I am running for House Representative District 123. I graduated from City College. I have an associate degree in science. I worked as a deputy sheriff and a city councilman for seven years in Iowa. I'm running for House Representative because education, founding, funding rather, teacher retention initiative, medical expansion are important to me along with retirement limits and quality healthcare for our veterans. I support the need for University Garden City. Lizette Cruz, my campaign manager, did a survey and she let go over the results with you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lizette Cruz. I'm going to pass out. So I'm a registered nurse. I do ER and I do some agency on the side traveling. And so one of the reasons why I did a survey was to find out what people think. Do people think we believe if we need a university? So that was my main objective along with seeing, well, do you believe we need a university? What type of university would it be? So the method I used, I used Google forms and I used, I set it up so that way there can only be one response per email, so that way we couldn't have one person answer 20 times.
...and working a lot even prenatally with some of our parents' families. And so we were pretty busy out there. And then we started a new program. It's a grant through the United Methodist Health Ministry Fund for this ABC. It's, we're actually in a research pilot program there. So lots going on and we struggle to hire and keep qualified staff, just like everybody does here. But the bulk of our staff do live here in Finney County. So I put our budget in there. We have topped $5 million now with all of what we do. And so there's a lot happening over in that little building over on down on Church Street. We do have 54 employees today and 36 of them do live here in Finney County. So those are people that are pretty good wagers and the kind of jobs that we like to bring here. So salary and benefits, you can see, are the biggest portion of our costs and the rest of that are grant dollars that are actually in our communities. We do actually serve 19 counties, so Finney's right kind of our central place in the middle. We have pilot, or not pilot, we have satellite offices in Liberal, Dodge, Scott City, and we have a lot of cars on the road. We have had wrecks this summer and we haven't had them for a long time. So when you get that many vehicles on the road, you just, you know, things happen. But fortunately, everybody's saved, so. Last year, and it's odd, we have the last full year for 2017, we served over 4,500 children in our county counties. And 1,360 of us kiddos were here in Finney County. So the bulk of the kids we serve, the bulk of the families are here. So there's always more to be done. The other thing that I think is important to know is all of our services are in the cost to families. And that's based on even the contracts or the brands that we have. So that isn't a barrier to keep them from doing that. And I know probably the biggest topic of interest is this new building that we have going. And so the rendering here is the most recent one. We did do some changes to the roof line to save some costs. And we've broken ground and so we went right. So I don't think much has happened out there in the last week, but I know there are a lot of those things that when I drive by, I don't really know all that. I know there's a lot, lot happening behind the scenes. And we are, we're really excited about this. And there will be so many things that we'll be able to do in this new building that we just can't now because of space. One of the biggest things is we'll have a bigger conference room there. And so we bring a lot of training to Garden. We have quite a bit of national speakers and sometimes we have, you know, 200, 300 people. And so we'll be able at least to have our staff in one room for meetings. So that's a really nice thing. We'll also be able to do some telegraph there. We have some rooms there that we have visitors come to our building now and we step over each other in the hallway. It's not very nice for families waiting. So, and then just our staff being able to have their own desk. So we're still amazing, but we have ways to go on that. So we always love to talk to people. Any help we can get. We've had funding from individuals, businesses, brands, and we're just still working on that and we're going to do it. But it's really pretty exciting. Our budget's gone up because it's taken us a while to get the funds raised, but we're about at 5.2 is what we're estimating will come in that maybe lower for lucky. And I do think you might be interested. I'm sure there are probably some others since I did this sheet, but we've been able to get a lot of bigger contracts with the larger dollar amount bulk that work to local contractors. And that was something our board felt very, was very important to. So we've gotten started and it's going to be very technical. I did include the floor plan, which I know sitting here you probably can't see very well, but if you really want to look close and see what some of those spots were before, we'd love to tell you more. I know I only have five minutes, but I don't think we have that, so.
You're doing good.
Do you have any questions?
And you say the target completion date is next, September of next year?
Yes.
Okay.
And it told us 12 months, so if the weather cooperates, that'll be the main thing. So we're hoping.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate you locating here in Garden City, Kansas, and the way that you're impacting the whole region. So I really, you know, when you think about how many people are impacting them at 16,000 square miles, that's, that's pretty desolate, but also it's so important the work you're doing. So I just really appreciate it so much.
Well, thank you. We believe in what we do, have a passion for it. So we're happy to be here and thank you for all your support. And it's been an interesting working process doing this building project. And I'm sure there's more work to be done than this. Anyway, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we need to add an executive session at the end of the meeting. I decline exception. Thank you.
Do we need to add anything else? Are we good? Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to come before the commission and comment on anything that's not on the agenda at this time? And give you five minutes? Okay, we'll move on.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim October 16th, 2018 as Taylor Sable Day. And there's a proclamation attached, Mayor? If you want to read.
Entertain a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion. We approve October 16th, 2018, Taylor Sable Day.
There's been a motion and a second by Commissioner Finkhauser. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. I'll get this signed.
And then we'll have Taylor come on up and join the mayor. So they're talking around.
We're going to have to figure out a way to.
Vote for it.
Yeah, that's okay. Proclamation. Whereas to excel in any sport, you must demonstrate in addition to natural ability and outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work. And whereas the girls 300 meter hurdle 6A state champion was captured by Taylor Sable with a time of 45.05 seconds. That's fast. Okay. At Sesna Stadium in Wichita, Kansas on May 26, 2018. And whereas Taylor Sable is to be commended for an outstanding season, and now therefore I, Roy Sesna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 16th, 2018, as Taylor Sable Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all residents to acknowledge and express their pride in your accomplishments and to encourage our youth in their endeavors towards excellence in life and show appreciation for good sportsmanship. Signed and sealed the 16th day of October, 2018, Roy Sesna, Mayor. Congratulations. Thank you.
Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim October 17th, 2018, as four by 800 meter relay team day.
Entertain a motion for that proclamation approval?
I move that we approve that proclamation.
Benham, motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Do we have representatives from that team to come up and join the mayor? Is that great?
Why do we have half the team here at this point? That's a good thing. Yeah, that's good. Yeah. The proclamation reads, whereas to excel in any sport, you must demonstrate in addition to your natural ability and outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work. And whereas the boys four by 800 meter relay 6A state championship was captured by Ethan Fisher, Jayvon Contreras, Cameron Wullemann, and Javier Cervantes with a time of 8 minutes 3 seconds 38 minutes 3.31 seconds at Sesna Stadium in Wichita, Kansas on May 26, 2018. And whereas the four by 800 meter relay team is to be commended for an outstanding season, and now therefore I, Roy Sesna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 17th, 2018, as four by 800 meter relay team day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their pride in your accomplishments and to encourage our youth in their endeavors towards excellence in life and show appreciation for good sportsmanship. Signed and sealed the 16th day of October, 2018, Roy Sesna, Mayor. Good job. Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
Good job.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve free vehicle admission to Lee Richardson Zoo for active military veterans, or and veterans on November 10th and 11th, 2018. This is consistent with what we've done in the past several years.
I move that we approve the readmission for active military and veterans.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
There's been a second on that item. Any other discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request under code section 6-35 to allow possession, consumption, and sale of cereal malt beverages during the Bad Boys Wrestling Event on Saturday, November 24th, 2018, at the Finney County Expo Building.
I'll make a motion to approve this request.
Say it.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request to waive the signed permit fees and authorize the signs to be located in the city of Ridaway of Kansas Avenue for a peddler's market from October 17th through October 2018. This is a request that's come before the commission in the past. Last year, the staff's recommendation was not to approve it. It wasn't consistent with the signed code or the consideration of fees. The governing body elected to waive those. Our recommendation now is to approve it because it would be a consistent application with what you considered to be, considered it to be last year with the same request.
I'll make a motion to waive the permit fees and the sign ordinance.
There's been a motion and Commissioner entered it. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 7, or section 7, I'd like to start off with an item not on the agenda. We'd like to recognize Cliff Sonnenberg, who was recognized earlier this month at the League of Kansas Municipalities meeting. And I think Mike Mearhead will give you an overview of Cliff's recognition and we'll take it from here.
I can do that. Thank you. Mary Wishers, good afternoon. Glad, why don't you come on up here? Don't be too shy. Yes, last week at the League of Kansas meetings, the media of the state, the governor and the league recognized Cliff Sonnenberg for 40 years of dedicated public service to the City of Garden City. And, but you know, not very often, I think there was a couple of people that might have 45 years, but 40 years is a long, long time. 40 years and been all with the City of Garden City in the electric department. Cliff talked a little bit about when he first started, he might have worked, I mean, talking earlier about water and electricity not mixing. They did what they had to do, whether it was electric or water or solid waste. And they did a terrific job then. He does a terrific job today. There's a big plaque we'll give to you and feel free to talk. Congratulations. I'll say something. I'm going to clap. Yeah, here's what it says. It says, "A certificate of appreciation to Cliff Sonnenberg. The League of Kansas Municipalities bestows this certificate of appreciation upon Cliff Sonnenberg in recognition of his 40 years contribution to the betterment of Kansas communities through loyal and dedicated service to the City of Garden City."
All right.
Congratulations, yes.
Thank you.
Cliff, do you want to join? I think it's fine.
Yes.
All right, all right, yeah, sure.
That's the time we made it. I wasn't sure we were going to.
This is Ashley. She's with the song.
And I was here yesterday. I didn't want to play.
Yeah, sure guys in front.
No, no, no. I don't want to play. No, I need that other guy that's in there.
Yeah.
Give me one more.
All right.
Dan's going to just.
All right. Congratulations. Good job.
Okay. It's a nice honor.
All right.
All right, back to the agenda. Item 7A, Director of Aviation Rochelle Powell will provide a report on the annual Federal Aviation Administration certification inspection, which was conducted on September 18th through 19th. Rochelle?
Yeah, Chairman. Every year we go through a very thorough FAA inspection that includes everything on our records, our training, including fire department training, the response on the airfield, emergency response, even our FOAs and our fuelers and all their training records and fuel trucks and everything. So it's a very in-depth inspection of the airport to make sure we're in compliance. This year we did have one discrepancy, which was a, two of the lines of service people had fire extinguisher training. That was a computer-based training. However, they had to have hands-on fire training. So that was a discrepancy. That was the only discretion, discrepancy this year in the inspection. However, that was resolved the next day with the help of the fire department. So every year we just come here to report kind of how the inspection went. So it was a good inspection and you can know that your airfield is very safe and everybody who contributes to that does a great job.
Any questions?
Very good.
All right, congratulations. Good job.
I did have a question about the airport staff report, but that's the next item.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll get to this. Of course, why Rochelle's up here, we'll go ahead and ask her.
I was just, I was looking at the breakdown of employments across the region and noticed
that Dodge and Hayes had come up a little bit, maybe taking a bite out of ours, but who really knows, honestly. Can you tell me about, update us on the service lines that are going through Dodge and Hayes now and kind of what the region's experiencing?
Yeah, so if you recall, the last couple of years have been very volatile for both airports with different air carrier services, bad unreliable service. They both have different carriers now, Liberal and Dodge, but they coach there with United through Denver Flight. So there is a great coach here now, both of the operators are doing a fantastic job, reliable service. Liberal has a 50-seat regional jet comparable to ours. And then Dodge has a 9-seat aircraft, which they will upgrade to a 50-seat aircraft in the next year and a half after they get their runway rebuilt. So that has increased the passenger ridership for both of those airports because they do have great reliable service now. So it has taken a little bit portion of our employments, I believe, but overall, the whole southwest Kansas region and all, and you can see by the numbers, has increased definitely from years past, with the exception of there was loss of service for a while in Dodge and Liberal, so that kind of affects the numbers too. But overall, in the region, the air service travel is up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Rochelle.
Thank you.
I think if the trend would continue, that the overall employments for western Kansas, and especially now that there are different destinations for Dodge, Garden, and Liberal, the total number will be up around those 2013, 2014 numbers for all of western Kansas. And our numbers will certainly show that we had employment levels that were level or up slightly. So I think that's a good thing, to condition people to fly regionally and not necessarily rush automatically to fly out of Denver or Wichita. There's other staff reports there, the ridership report from CityLink, Lee Richardson Zoo's report, Neighborhood and Development Services has both their code compliance and their building report. Melinda's prepared the monthly financial report and then the results of our annual auction are also included. That coinciding with the citywide cleanup is proof that one man's junk is another man's treasure. But we are required in our disposal of our property to do that competitively, and so that's why we have that annual auction every year and show you publicly what we sold and what we sold it for. Any questions on those? If not, I'll call your attention to section 8 of the agenda. This is Meetings of Note. I would like to call your attention to one additional item. Thursday night, November 1st, at 6:30 PM at the Dodge House Restaurant in Dodge City, Kansas, Great Plains Development, Inc. will have its annual meeting. We are a member of Great Plains Development and they administer some different grant programs for us, revolving loan fund, I believe is one of them. Commissioner Finkhauser serves on their board. I think he's, has a leadership role on their board.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman. And so he gets the big stake on Thursday night, November 1st, but the rest of you are welcome to attend as well. If you'd like to RSVP, we probably need that RSVP in the next week or so. Do that through Jared Smith and, or you can copy me on the email too, and I'll make sure Jared gets that information and gets that sent off in time to Great Plains. Also, just a reminder, tomorrow morning is the State of the City address. Mayor Sesna's been working on that and will be presenting that tomorrow morning to the Chamber of, or at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast. I believe folks interested in attending can RSVP or advise the chamber that they plan to attend. That tends to be one of the better attended breakfasts of the year. And so a call ahead to the Chamber of Commerce at 2763264 will help them prepare. And one final question, on November 10th, the Veterans', I believe is the Veterans' Day Parade, is that correct? Does anybody remember from that? Well, that's the fireworks show on the 10th, but I believe that's the date of the parade as well?
I think that, yes.
I mean, commissioners plan on riding in that parade? If so, can you let Jared know so that we can make sure we've got a vehicle or the multi-passenger golf cart ready for you? All right, good stuff. 9A, is the appropriation ordinance, if approved, it would be number 2469-2018A.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2469-2018A.
I have a second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passes.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to code section 9309. The, the, pardon me. This is section article, or this is Article 5, Electric Utility, Customer-Owned Residential and Commercial Renewable Energy Generation Facilities. And if approved, it would be ordinance number 2807-2018. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This really is, and we rewrote this particular section of the code under generation facilities, people that can put in solar generation or some other type of generation, a connected tower system. We had, we had this code in before. We've made a few adjustments based upon some changes within the state and some recommend, some recommendations from one of our customers actually had come forward and had some recommendations. We've made no changes. And what we have before you is the final version. We currently have four customers, some type of renewable generation, for Garden City, like all four are solar and three are residential, one is commercial.
Has that fee always been $500?
Yeah, the review fee is.
That seems high, but I don't know.
Well, it's intended to be high for two reasons. One reason mainly is to make sure that the people that are coming forward, you can have all the information pre, before we sit down and take the time to review everything and go through. It's pretty extensive to get everything approved and make sure that there's a safety apparatus is in place, they know what they're getting into. So it serves as a deterrent, but at the same time, those that are interested in $500 investment into the rest of what they're going to do is actually pretty minimal. So far, we haven't had any, no concerns with it.
Okay. So what were the changes? I guess what, what were the changes in the code section? Because I went through, I read through it, but I didn't really see, you didn't highlight anything. There was one area that was highlighted that placed city name here in that area, but I mean, what, can you explain what, if anything really majorly changed in it or nothing really major?
So far, we haven't had any, no concerns with it.
Okay.
So what were the changes? I guess, what, what were the changes in, in the code section? Because I went through, I read through it, but I didn't really see, you didn't highlight anything. There was one area that was highlighted that placed city name here in that area, but, I mean, what, can you explain what, if anything really majorly changed in it, or nothing really major, or just?
Most of them were just kind of graphic changes.
Okay.
Correction. The major change, it really wasn't a major change, is that we, Garden City, would true-up the bill at the end of the year. It's recommended, it was recommended by everybody to say that we do that on a monthly basis rather than annual, so we made that change in here.
All right.
Every month, we review their, we review what they generated, if they've generated more than what they produce from us, and we pay them, it's actually 150% of our avoided costs of electricity. It doesn't make tons of money.
Right.
That was a major change, and I apologize for not having that in there for you.
That's all right. I just checked.
I know, I believe they talked about making sure that, that we didn't, well, I know that there's some changes coming down, especially solar power becoming something that's actually more viable. And it indicated that southwest Kansas was particularly, you know, attractive for that kind of, so, but from what I understood, what they were talking about was making sure that we didn't pay them, but rather it was kind of a break even, or they didn't have to have any charge. Will we be doing something like that? KMEA gave the presentation, so.
What's concerned is with a lot of utilities that's not prepared for this, is that they're, they charge a very low base charge, very low customer charge, so they may only be charged at $3 or $5, and then they pay a higher energy charge. What happens is it costs more than $3 to have that energy, have it ready and delivered to your house. So what they're encouraging other utilities to do, and it's across the country, it's not just Kansas, is get the base rate higher, you know, to where you're actually recovering the cost of what it costs to have power delivered to the house, and then you can have lower energy costs, so we truly pay them just for the energy and not for that customer service charge. So that's the biggest change. We've been, since we redid our structure in 2012, that was taken into consideration at that time, for base charge for residential customers, $19.50. It used to be $21.50, and then the commission authorized us to reduce that, so we're in good shape there.
Any other questions?
I move that we approve ordinance 2807-2018.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Dale seconded. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the low bid for the general obligation bonds, which will be received on October 16th at 11:00 AM. An ordinance authorizing the bonds is presented for consideration and approval. Ordinance, if approved, it would be ordinance number 2808-2018.
Hi, Melinda.
Good afternoon. We took this this morning, and I'd like to introduce to you Brett Shover from George K. Maum. He's our financial advisor, and he's going to give you some information on the bond sale.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I'm Lieutenant Lieutenant of the Department of Commerce. Previous meeting, you adopted a resolution scheduling $10,830,000 general obligation bond sale for today, October 16th, 2018. In between that time, our staff worked with your staff to develop a preliminary official statement. That's the offering document for the bonds, and we submitted that along with your most recent caper to Moody's for an underlying credit rating. That's who we normally use to get our, to get your bonds credit rating. And I passed around two documents. One of them is the Moody's report, the credit opinion that they developed. And I'll just hit some high points on that document. First of all, they're overall impressed with the city's management and moderately-sized tax base. It serves as a regional economic center in western Kansas. They like that its tax base is growing. It's grown at an average of 6.3% per year for the last five years, as well as a decline in debt to assessed valuation percentage also in each of those last five years. Also positives are, they noted that the reserves have increased by 45.6% since 2012, and the city's fund balances are healthy according to the methodology. The recently approved county-wide sales tax is also a positive, as it is supposed to bring an estimated $2.1 billion annually to the city, the fund transportation, parks, and various other projects. And the net structure is favorable, as it is all fixed rate, all of your debt is fixed rate, and matures fairly rapidly, as 74.2% of the principal will be repaid over 10 years or less. Some negatives that they point out, resident income levels are slightly below the average in the United States, at 85% of the national average. But they do note that this is slightly offset by affordable housing, which the median home value is 66.3% of the national average. The city's fixed costs, including debt service, pension, and OPV contributions are slightly elevated and account for 21.2% of operating revenues. And based on, based on these factors, they reaffirmed your AA3 rating, which is, you've had that rating for at least the last five years, maybe a little bit longer. And they indicated that the city shows characteristics, a lot of characteristics, of a AA2 rating, which is just the next notch higher. But mainly, the tax base is just not quite large enough to be in line with other AA2-rated municipalities. It's kind of just a, they have milestones, and the next milestone, your tax base has to grow quite a bit to get in that category. They also note factors that can lead to an upgrade include significant increase in revenues and/or material tax base growth, and factors that can lead to a downgrade would be deterioration of sales tax collections, which is the city's largest revenue source, and/or decline in reserves. And if we could, if we could give you any advice as to credit ratings, reserves are key. We've had, we've had another client that spent down some reserves for a project, and they downgraded them pretty good, so advice. Yes, sir.
Do you, do you happen to know what, like Dodge and Liberal's credit rating is?
I'm not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
I don't. I can get that for you if you'd like, unless you know.
I'd like to know.
Okay. I can do that. But yes, reserves are very important. And basically, they assigned a AA3 credit rating to your bonds. We alerted the marketplace to that. We submitted the preliminary official statement to, between 300 and 400 potential underwriters for bids. We opened up the bids this morning and received seven bids. Hutchinson, Shockey, Early, and Company was the worst bid with the highest interest cost at 3.465442%. And the best bid was by Commerce Bank. Their interest cost was 3.229933%. They did bid a premium of just over $101,000, a premium, if you're not familiar with it. Basically, they, they're buying some of your bonds at more than face value. They want, the investors are demanding a little bit higher coupon for that cash flow, and they'll pay you extra on top for that higher coupon. And what we do to offset that is we issue fewer bonds for those higher coupons. So basically, instead of issuing $10,385,000, we only issue $10,730,000 today. So that's the offset there.
So Brett, on these, are these, is this the standard number of offers people, or is this something that's unusual, or is this the first? Right, the amount of offers?
Yes, Garden City is pretty popular. I believe last year we had nine bids on your regularly scheduled general obligation bond offer. I'm not at all surprised that we got at least seven minutes to pay.
Looks good.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Carson to explain the ordinance and resolution for adoption and to accept that bid, unless there's any more questions for me.
I was going to say, any more questions for Brett?
Oh, I, I do want to mention, this, this was a $10,835,000 bond issued. It was split up into two projects. Basically, we offered one, one series of bonds that had literally two sub-series. One of them, about 80% of the bond issued was for a water sewer project, and about 20% was for parks and streets. And what we did, whenever we downsized the bond issue, we leveledized the debt service payments for each of those projects as much as we could, so.
Do they, does, like, Commerce offer these to anybody else? Do they sell these, or do they just keep them all themselves?
Usually, they'll reoffer them.
Really?
Yeah. In this circumstance, they're pretty good bidder, as far as when we offer bonds, and they usually do reoffer them.
And these are tax exempt, right?
Yes, yeah, these are tax-exempt general obligation bonds.
Federal and state?
Federal and state.
So that's a pretty good rate.
Investor's interest is tax exempt.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm Mary Carson, head of the law firm of Triple Paul Garrettson. I've been serving the city as your bond counsel for many years, and just want to go through what we need to do now at this point, is to take, have the commission take the legal action necessary to authorize the bonds, and it's set up on your, on your agenda that we need to do it, which is the first step would be to have a motion to accept the bid of Commerce Bank of Kansas City, Missouri. And then we'll move to adopting the ordinance. The ordinance is the legislative action of the commission to authorize issuance of the bonds, and in the ordinance, we make a reference to a longer resolution, which is the next item on there, that specifies all the terms and conditions of the bonds. So includes the interest rates, redemption provisions, all of the things that we've established in today with the sale. And we divide them up, as some of you know, I've done this before, we've divided them up just to save on litigation costs. So we do a shorter ordinance to accomplish the legislative action, and then move the rest of the details into the resolution. I can answer any questions you might have about any of those, any of those documents that include in the pack that we have updated the resolution, the ordinance for the resizing and included the interest rates. That's, that's on hand here. After you do this, what we will do is assemble a transcript of all the proceedings that led up to this, of the prior action due to bad clauses of the projects. There's a number of closing certificates, both understate and federal law, that are executed, and we submit all of that to the Kansas Attorney General for review, obtain their approval, and then we're ready to go forward with the closing on the bonds, which I believe is scheduled for November 6th.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2808-2018.
Do we first need to approve Commerce Bank, accepting?
I thought that's the, okay. I'll make a motion, we approve Commerce Bank's bid for the bonds, $10.835 million?
I'll second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve Commerce Bank for the bid. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passes. Now you can do the.
Okay, now I'll do my ordinance 2808-2018.
There's been a motion on the ordinance 2808-2018. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passes. And then we have to do a resolution. And we have the resolution number?
That's correct. Mayor and Commissioners, this would be what's item C1 on your agenda, if approved, to be resolution number 2747-2018.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2747-2018.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second. Any other discussion on that item? All in favor of resolution 2747-2018, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passes.
Mayor, just to let you know, we, I had a conversation earlier with several of the staff, and I remember seeing you before, but I, you can highly recommend it, and they said some really nice things about you, so.
Thank you.
And I really, I really appreciate the work you're doing for us, this city, and these rates. You beat, you beat everyone's guesstimates, so this is, this is awesome. We appreciate your work.
Thanks.
Do you remember what our, our last bond was? It seemed to me like it was 2.7, wasn't it?
1.7.
1.7.
That was, we were talking about that earlier. This was the lowest, that was the lowest rate.
Yeah.
So they're moving up, yeah.
Yeah, they're a little higher, higher now than they were last year.
Yeah.
Quite a bit higher.
Quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Market correction, the stock market's a little, so. And to answer your question, I just looked it up, Dodge City and Liberal are both A-plus rated, which is just one notch under the AA3 rating. Standard 4 is the version of it, but.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D.
Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the rural housing incentive district for Northborough First Edition. If approved, this would be resolution number 2748-2018.
We have the, the staff report in your packet. This is the second step the commission needs to take to establish our incentive district for the Northborough First Edition. The development consists of 10 duplexes or 20 single-family units, and these all be rental units. So the governing body may approve the attached resolution, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Entertain a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2748-2018.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Item 11A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a bid that will sell the property at 3206 North Campus Drive. Jennifer?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. At your meeting on September 4th, you authorized a sealed bid process that would take place for the property at 3206 North Campus Drive. Mr. Rizell put a sign in the lot, and we got several people who inquired about it, and at the end of the day, we received four bids on the property. City Attorney Rizell and Assistant City Attorney Cunningham opened those together and then passed them on to me, and now I am putting them before you. There is no requirement that you accept the highest bid, but obviously, that's before you. So you have the highest coming in at 70, and then you have three others that are kind of in the range of each other. If you recall, this property was worth just, per Benny County Eraser, was worth just over $63,000. And so at this time, I just need to know if you guys want to accept one of the four bids, if you would like to deny all four bids and go through some other sort of process, or if you have some other sort of suggestion coming up today. Yes, Mr. Rizell?
Does Tim Romi, does he own the property right east of this? So he could use this building without any trouble? Okay.
And I just had a question about the bid.
Yes.
That particular bid, the high bid?
Yes.
Does look like it was changed.
Yes.
So can you explain that a little bit?
Randy can probably explain it in more detail, however, Michaela, who is his legal assistant, is the one who collected all of the bids, and they were put in sealed envelopes by the bidders themselves. The bidders actually fill them out and then stick them in an envelope so that no one sees them. Mr. Romi or Mrs. Romi, whoever.
It was Mr. Romi.
Okay, he came back in and asked to change his bid, and so he actually opened his envelope and made the change and put it back in the envelope and so that no one saw it. No one was aware that it had been changed, I mean, other than her knowing that he came in and wrote on it, wasn't aware of what it was changed or how it was changed. And then Mr. Rizell clarified with me that he felt that, looking at them and knowing how the process went, that he was, he believed that the interior of the process was, was good throughout the entire process.
Correct. Thank you.
And if we accepted it, he understands he would pay the $70,000?
We'll all develop a real estate purchase contract, and assuming he signs the contract or the entity signs the contract, it'll recolves, individual or entity. He'll sign a contract, or they will, and then we'll subsequently sell the property to them. to them.
And that will actually come before you, before that. So as part of this, he's required to put down a thousand dollars, thousand dollars in earnest money, so that will happen. Mr. Rizell will do the contract, the contract will come before you, for the purchase agreement will come before you. You guys can take a look at it and then make any adjustments from there, and then we will be finished with it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the high bid at seventy thousand dollars for the purchase of this property to Mr. Romi.
There's been a motion, there's a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passes. Thank you. Oh, you still up? Oh, you are still up.
Item. Pardon me.
Eleven.
Item 11B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a community input process for the big pool. Jennifer?
Will you open my? Sorry, thank you. So when I was before you guys at the last meeting, we had a small discussion about how we were going to proceed with community input and what that was going to look like. And so this presentation, I hope, will at least get us started down that road, and then you guys can fill in the details and we can go from there. But the first slide that I want to start with before we actually get into the process is Commissioner Umrah had some questions at the last meeting, and so I want to address those before we dive into the process. So as you'll see on the slide, the total season cost was four hundred and sixty-three thousand and eight hundred dollars. Over a hundred and thirty-nine days, now not a hundred and thirty-nine days open because the last couple of weeks, obviously, we're only on weekends. So we only have about eighty-six total operation days, so that's a little bit different, but we did over the entire period because that's the way we were losing water, so this is the easiest way to look at it. So three thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars per day is what it costs us to run the big pool currently. That is no capital expense, as you see, the capital cost was three hundred and ten thousand for this season, so that doesn't even include that in that expense. And then what you'll see, the one thousand nineteen dollars per day is just the two hundred thousand dollars, or the two hundred thousand gallons of water that we're losing every day. So that's the cost of that. So one-third, a little under one-third of our daily cost is that water that we're losing. And this is not a retail cost of water, this is our utility expense, so that's really important to understand. So this cost would obviously be extremely inflated. And then there's one additional thing that's not included in here that Mike Muirhead got to me yesterday, and that was that we also spent another one hundred and thirty-three dollars a day on electricity. So in addition to what is shown here, we also spent that on electricity for the pool. And then you can see our revenue is six hundred and fifty-six dollars a day. So you can see, Commissioner Umrah, as you ask, how bad is it and what does that look like? And so you can see just, just how bad that is on a, on a daily basis. Any questions on that side in particular? Good. So when we were here last time, there wasn't a lot of really specific direction that you gave me. So what I tried to develop here is what I see the process, and so this came from me with a little bit of feedback from staff that has also worked with the pool, Mike and Matt, and tried to come up with a plan that I think will work to gather the information that we need and get you all to a place that you can make a decision about where we go from here. So the first thing would be to identify project concepts. This, I imagine would take somewhere between thirty and forty-five days, I put the longer of the two out there, just to give myself some room. But the plan here would be identify different options, so current location, other locations throughout the city for other types of projects that might be water projects, whatever that looks like. Try and develop photographs from other facilities in other communities to see what they've done, and also project costs based on what they've done. And this can be from getting completely out of aquatics, doing nothing to do with, with water and not offering that service, all the way up to the most extravagant project you could possibly have, and everything in between. But giving the community an option to look at all of those things and saying, what do we really need and what do we really want? And how do we, if we are going to do this, how do we provide that service? So I think that's step one. Step two, as I see it, would be to identify groups to engage. I don't think this will take very long because I think we already kind of know who we want to engage. I may have missed some here, but of course, the swim teams and their coaches, people who have worked at the pool, people who use the pool, people who do not use the pool, which I think is a really big category that I need to talk to. Obviously, both the city and county commission, any of the churches who maybe would use the pool but aren't currently, daycares that aren't using it, and night, and then just anybody else, we'll have some general sessions. And I think we offer some of those in the evenings, some of those on the weekends, try and get as many people to talk to us about what they want and want to see in that service as we can. And so that's kind of step two, as I see it.
So I just wanted to tell you also, if you want translation services, I think that would be also an option, and I can help you get those.
Okay.
At really reasonable costs, so we can.
Okay, great, yeah, I think we definitely, as I put up there, we want to offer in as many languages as possible. So then, on to step number three. This would be prepare to engage each of the identified group stakeholders. And so I think this would probably take me a couple of weeks to get this finished, but put together questions for each of the groups, a presentation that I would give them before we ask them the questions, and then a discussion, discussion portion that we would go through. And so we would use the Yankin Clicker system, which is, gives us a lot of easy access to the data when we're finished that I can present to you. And then we also would create a survey that we would be able to have people do online through Facebook, or our website, any other forms of social media that we have. And then also, we would be able to hand those out in paper form. That's not really very convenient for staff, but I think it's a must because some people aren't going to have access to a computer or a way to fill those out. So having, having them be able to pick one up in multiple languages and fill that out and drop it off to us, and we did that for another survey process. And so I think when we, when we did a rec, when we had a rec issue, we used that and it worked well, we just stopped and entered it at the end. So I think that would, that would be what we did with step number three. And so on to step number four. Oh, I'm like, how did I get, I skipped this one? So step number four would be actually scheduling these sessions. And so I think this would take thirty, thirty days to schedule in a line, but one, one concentrated week where I would spend probably with one other staff person or two other staff people having these meetings, collecting the data, and getting it in a form that I can get before you. And so this is kind of how I would, I would foresee that they would be laid out, a lot of advance notice, a lot of advertisement, so that we get people into the sessions, one to one and a half hours per session, and then, like I said before, lunch morning, afternoon, evening, weekends, and have the same person facilitating each, so that we get the same results across the board. So step number five would be then for me to prepare the results, which would take a little bit of time. I didn't put a timeline on this because I'm not entirely sure, it depends on how much we get, right? If we have ten people who come out and engage, that's going to be really easy for me to put together before you. But if we have ten thousand come out and get engaged, that's going to be a little bit more difficult and a little bit longer process for me to get it before you. So I didn't put a timeline on this, but, you know, I think can be done relatively quickly once I have it all.
Mm-hmm.
Step number six, my hope would be that I could then provide a written report as part of the commission meeting on March nineteenth, that would also pair with a pre-meeting on March nineteenth, where we could start a little bit early and have a presentation of all of that information, invite anyone who came through the process and to that meeting, if they also want to add anything now that they have been able to see the written report, it will come out Friday before, obviously, and then give you guys some time to really think about that information before you give me some final direction. So after step number six, April 2nd, my thought would be is that we would have it before you for a decision on direction. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that you will make a decision on, yes, we're going to do project date, but what I would foresee is that you would give me direction on, please go out and get a final cost on this particular project, or the logistics of this particular project, and bring it back to us to make that final decision. And you may be at a point where you say, yep, we want to, we want to go all in on this, but obviously, that's, that's something that you won't know until you know what that looks like. So, step number seven, and then here's the conclusion. So you can approve the process, as I presented it to you, with an understanding that I may make small changes as needed throughout the process, nothing to compromise the information that we get from the community, but just to make sure that we do get as many people as possible into the process. You can approve with directed changes, obviously, this is your process, it's not mine, so if there's things you want to add, change, include, that would be great. Or you could choose not to approve this at all, and, or any variation of it, and give me further direction.
No, I think you've done a good job on it. I, I think, kind of, understanding from what we discussed at the last meeting, you took kind of the limited information that we kind of provided you and did a very good job on it. It looks good to me, I listened from any of the other commissioners on it.
I agree, and I, I really appreciate the fact that, that the timeline is put in, that you did include. I, I feel strongly that we need to get down to some specifics now, knowing we may not forego next season, but really get down to some specifics and start forming a plan. And I think the community, this allows for enough time for good quality community input, which I think is very important, from a broad range of sources, I appreciate the way that you outlined that and strategy to contact folks. But I do think that springtime next year, we need to be looking at this very carefully and making a decision.
So is this in time before our goal setting set? I'm sorry, I can't remember when we did that.
February.
Is it before our goal setting?
It's February.
February's our goal setting, so this would come, take place afterwards? I was just wondering where that all fell into a lot.
It will be close enough that at your goal, my, kind of, I thought about that as I went through this process and, and what could I give you, what could I possibly have done? If there's any way that I can have the data ready for the goal setting retreat, I, I will do that. If not, what I will do at your goal setting retreat is provide you with an extended update of, hey, I think this is where it's going, this is where it's heading at this point, although we don't have final numbers, but enough for you guys to digest that and think about it as you're, as you're planning for, for the next eighteen months.
But I think through these steps, I think it will give us some good information on a direction to take the pool to whatever level we need to go in the community, and we get that input from the community itself on that, on that direction. You. Question or comment?
What do we have coming off of our geo-bonds, say in nineteen, twenty? I mean, what, can you recall?
We have roughly two hundred thousand coming off.
Two hundred thousand of bonds.
That's what we, there are bonds for this year, in payments, in principle.
Oh, payments, not, what, like, principal, how much is coming off? Do you know?
As far as principal?
Like a million, two million?
No, it's, it's between two and three hundred thousand in payments.
Yeah, I know that, but how many, how much is that in?
Total debt.
Total debt, yeah, is what I'm talking about.
That'd be roughly two million hanging off.
Two million, okay. That's what I was, and that's for nineteen?
That's right.
Right, okay.
I appreciate, that's, and I, step by step is really, you've done a wonderful job, and so I appreciate the attention to detail and all of the people you're trying to engage. I know this is something that's been in our community, and again, it's a, I mean, it's been here forever, and so how we treat it, and with respect, knowing that we really want a lot of community input, so, no, I think it's, thank you for the time and energy it took to put this together.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve this community input process for the big pool.
There has been a motion.
Second.
And a second? Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That got approved. Good job, thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 12A, you're asked to consider and approve a development agreement for First Christian Church located at 2908 North Eighth Street.
Ending the step down.
Okay. Let it be noted that Commissioner Finkhauser has stepped down on this item.
All right, we have the complete staff report in your packets for your review. The developer, the First Christian Church, is looking at this location at 2908 North Eighth Street for the development of their facilities at that location. As outlined in the staff report, this development agreement outlines, because there are certain public improvements that usually occur or are required based on the status of the, of surrounding facilities. In this property, the developer and the city, through this agreement, want to have certain insurances, but the city and the property owners, the First Christian Church, infrastructure improvements are defined on the agreement, and these major changes that are in the development agreement are items A, B, and C in your staff report, which is sidewalks. Because Bellevue and Eighth Street are currently, Eighth Street at this section is a county road, and Bellevue is an unimproved city street, and due to elevations and not knowing what the development of, bringing those streets up to city standards as they currently are, we don't want to have developers where someone go in and put, you know, the infrastructure that won't be useful or will have to be removed, an additional cost to procure. So through this development agreement, sidewalks will be, are being put off for future development as stated in the agreement. In the event a developer requests access to the property from Bellevue Avenue, the developer will be required to install five-foot wide sidewalks along Bellevue Avenue, including handicap ramps at the intersection of North Eighth Street and Bellevue Avenue, and a location required by code as a condition of those building permits at such time as they, they pull those. The others, in regards to street improvements on both Bellevue Avenue and North Eighth Street, again, both of these, one is located, it is a county road, and the other is an unimproved city street. And at this location, it wouldn't be productive for us to have them putting in a street where we, we don't have any plans or funding to improve those streets at this time. So this development agreement outlines those items. Are there any questions regarding those items? If not, you have alternatives before you to the governing body may approve the proposed development agreement as stated, the governing body may deny the proposed development agreement as stated, but the governing body may amend the proposed development agreement, and staff recommends approval of the development agreement as stated. There is no fiscal note for this request, since there is no improvements anticipated to be made by the city at this time or within the next five years on either Eighth Street or Bellevue Avenue.
Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve the development agreement?
I'll make a motion, we approve the proposed development agreement as stated.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. We'll wait for Commissioner Finkhauser to come back and be seated.
Kayla, can I just ask a, a general question as to how that came to be that Eighth Street is, that part of Eighth Street is county road, but is the, then the city limit line right at the end of Bellevue? Or how is that, that connectivity is kind of odd?
That is correct, if we go back to that, we could look at that.
Is that in the packet, or do I need to get on GIS for that?
Yeah, GIS, it's not in the packet.
Yeah, I know.
My question is, it just seems like that's a pretty big impediment to develop anywhere up that direction.
That's correct, anytime we receive annexation that's happened into the areas, that's where we run into is whether the streets are annexed into the city limits or not, similar to the issues that we run into with our Jenny Barker Road.
Right.
It's right up against city limits, matter of fact, in some areas, it's on both sides, but the portion of the road is in the county, in our county street. And so we just have to, as development goes forward with the annexation of it, the, most of these roads are dedicated, so they're dedicated right away or easements to the county at that time, and they normally aren't brought into the city limits with the annexation because it's an actual easement or road right away that's dedicated to the county. The county would then have to dedicate those right ways or easements to the city. At such time that we would take over those roads. The other issue is, is some of these county roads aren't up to city standards, so there's a large expense that goes into upgrading those as development occurs. Our current practice is that, that it's developer-driven, the developer's responsible for upgrading those roads as demands require it.
Yeah.
But a, but a year, wasn't it like a year or two ago that we- But, but a year, wasn't it like, a year or two ago that we actually annexed that for this project, the, into the city? I remember?
That is correct. These two properties, both of these two properties here were annexed into the city limits. This is an island that is not in the city limits, here, and so, as you can see, Bellevue is a city inside city limits, but the, but the Eighth Street is not.
This is cornerstone here. Their property is closer to their north?
Um, I believe they own.
For the north.
The church is here, but they own this.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? All right. Thank you. We're at item B.
Item twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the KDOT agreement number one nine three dash one eight for project number fifty dash twenty-eight, K-A dash thirty-two fifty-one dash oh one, N-H-P-P dash A three two five one oh one. Pavement replacement at the intersection of Spruce Street and U.S. Fifty Eighty-three four hundred bypass, is probably a better description. Sam?
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, Matt. Mayor and Commissioners.
And Matt.
Staff, staff has been working with KDOT for the past two years while they were redesigning their reconstruction project on the bypass. The bypass project, KDOT's going to do that in two thousand and nineteen and complete it in two thousand and nineteen. There will be two phases, the north phase, or the phase one will be the north side, which will start at the intersection of Third, work its way around the curve, and then stop around Kansas Avenue. The second phase, we'll go from there, hop over Chone, because we've already rebuilt that intersection, and it, it's completed at the interchange at Fulton. During the second phase, Spruce Street will be closed down to traffic, and we have some pavement issues at that intersection, and, and so, we've been working with KDOT for the past two years on a partnership project with them. While they have the bypass shut down, would be a good time to rebuild those sections on Spruce Street. We've included a, a drawing for you to look at, kind of, to show in the areas that we're looking at. So, KDOT's responsible for the intersection, the city is responsible for the hatched-out areas. And right now, that's kind of a no-man's land, we don't really seal it, because we don't want to drag material out onto the bypass. And so, when they go through to rebuild the bypass with nine-inch concrete, they will also repair the hatched areas with nine-inch concrete. So, that will serve the city for a long, long time. And we do have some problems at the bridge where the pavement has got, got a dip, so we'll correct that. So, we've been working with them for the past two years on that. The funding source, we talked to you a little bit about this in the pre-meeting, we talked about the Eighth Street project, that we were going to use the federal exchange funds that we've been banking for since two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. However, that only comes to about eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the Eighth Street project. So, we really need about a million, million and one for the Eighth Street project. So, we were going to come back to you and recommend that we use the two thousand and nineteen federal exchange money and a hundred and eighty thousand to go to the Eighth Street project, which would bring that up to the one million, to the one point one million. And then, we would use the other one hundred thousand dollars for this partnership with KDOT. And we kind of touched on that in that pre-meeting. So, in front of you is, is the agreement between the city and KDOT to consider that partnership and spend two thousand and nineteen federal exchange funds for that project. However, the cost of the construction of Spruce Street will be established by the, the contractor's bid. So, after it's bid, it could come in cheaper, we're hoping it does, because with the KDOT project, it's a fair and large project, so we should get very good competitive prices on our share of it. And so, we're hoping it's less than a hundred thousand. But when the secretary signs that agreement, then we would have to pay that hundred thousand dollars upfront. And what we would do is take those funds that we've already banked, and then, in early two thousand and nineteen, you guys would have, I'd have to come in front of you and recommend that you sign a supplemental agreement for the two thousand and nineteen, and then we could just reimburse what we spent in two thousand and eighteen. So, your alternatives for this project would be, one, to approve the KDOT agreement for the pavement replacement for Spruce Street, entied to the KDOT project, or to deny the agreement, and then we would have to find a different way to repair the pavement at Spruce Street. Staff recommends that we go ahead and approve the agreement with KDOT and repair all the, the bypasses shutdown. The physical note, again, would be that we would have to spend some of the, the current funds out of special traffic way that we've been banking, and then, we did our two thousand and nineteen, then we'll just reimburse that in the revenue account.
Sounds like a win-win, really. I mean, we're funding both projects and fixing the Spruce Street areas.
I'm question, from Third Street around to Kansas?
Yeah, that'd be phase one.
Yeah, I know, but what, is it that, is it bad?
Um, they do have some concrete issues.
Do they?
That's been there since, I'm guessing, the seventies, late seventies, probably, the pavement. The phase two is the asphalt section.
Right, that, that definitely is bad.
Yeah.
But I, I, you know, I guess they know, but it didn't seem like that should be wearing out this.
Part of the, part of the problem on the bypass on that first phase is the interchange at Merrick Street. They've had some bridge faults, so when they redo the pavement, they're going to try to correct some of that as well.
Okay.
I note that we approve the KDOT agreement for the pavement replacement of Spruce Street with KDOT project.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. That item passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, the next item is twelve C. I've been asked to pull off and, and present, so that we can maybe just have a, a public discussion of the, of the item, as much as it is about having questions on it. For the Pioneer Pathway, C five. So, that means the consent agenda would be C one through four.
I'll make a motion. We approve consent agenda C one through four.
I'll second that motion.
There's been a second. Any other discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. That item passes.
And, yeah, if I could have, Kim from Melissa, either's Caleb Brown?
Yes.
Could you go ahead and present the Pioneer Pathway project?
All right, the Pioneer Pathway project is, where we had, you have before you, is the, the bid, that we just rebid the project, as you know, for a second time. We only had one bidder on this project, and, and so, we tried to change the timeframe and some other things. We had the engineers look at the projects, get any more bids, and get those bids lower. Unfortunately, it didn't come back completely in, in our favor, in what we hoped would happen in, in this. And so, the city rebid the project on October tenth, and only one bid was again received from the same contractor for the amount of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-seven. Since based on the bid, with the base bid and eighteen thousand, seven sixty-one, forty-eight per additive one, the bid is below our, our revised engineer's estimate. Of the seven hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred allocated for this project, seventy-six thousand, five hundred and forty-six for the right-of-way, seventy-six thousand, forty-nine for engineering services, eighty-five thousand for construction inspection, and five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and five remains available for the construction improvements. The contractor anticipates that the construction will commence on or about June tenth, twenty nineteen, and will be completed on or about August nineteenth, twenty nineteen. It's clear that the project is too small and segmented to garner interest of additional contractors. So, your alternatives before you is to approve the bid from AIPAC Kansas, Inc., for Shears Division for the base bid, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents, and additive one of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-eight cents for a total amount of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-one, vote five, contingent on concurrence and authorization by KDOT. Alternative two is to award the base bid for AIPAC Kansas, Inc., Shears Division for four hundred and seventy-fourty nineteen fifty-seven, contingent on concurrence and authorization by KDOT. Or, alternative three, which would be to reject the bid, and request KDOT permission to advertise for a project a third time. Staff recommends alternative number one to approve bids for AIPAC Kansas with, as it closed, and alternative number one for four hundred and ninety-three thousand, five eighty-one, oh five, including additive one.
So, Caleb, on the, when it says that, the bid is below our revised engineer, engineer's estimate, is that Wilson and Company, or is that, I know that Steve originally worked on this project. Is that Wilson and Company, and then the engineering costs, services, is that your, we would pay those to the AIPAC? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, the, the, the four hundred cent, those dollar amounts, as they're broken down, is from Wilson, is our estimated engineer's cost member for Wilson, is the city engineers. And the engineering cost is the engineering cost of, of Wilson for the design of the project.
I'll make the motion to approve alternate one, which is approving the bid to AIPAC Kansas, Inc., Shears Division for the base bid of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight nineteen fifty-seven, and an additive one of eighteen thousand, seven sixty-one and forty-eight cents for a total amount of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and five cents, contingent on concurrence with the authorization by KDOT.
I'll second your motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Thank you.
I think that concludes our agenda items. If the commission would like to do its commission reports, then we conclude, can conclude with the executive session, and we don't anticipate any action even to be necessary after the executive session.
We need to go through C one through four, right?
We already did that.
Were you approved of that already?
Yeah.
Where was I?
I don't know. You were sitting right beside me. Okay.
Went right over.
We'll start with Commissioner Dale.
I want to thank the, the airport for their fine grading, or their, their testing and stuff, inspection they had, the police department and fire department, and all their departments that are involved. That's a very, very big deal that goes on out there. They work hard to get that done. That's basically all I have as far as commission reports. I just would like to, to thank the commissioners for, for all the great discussions today.
Commissioner Enra.
So, I really appreciate, there is a lot going on in Garden City, and this is the time, the season of plays and concerts and all kinds of things. So, today in Liberal, if you want to see our incredible marching band, they'll be down there at WAC. And so, just to let, let us, everyone in Garden City know that your attendance at these events, even if you don't have children there, for those of you who have kids, it's almost required, but for those of you who don't, I'll tell you, it's, it means a lot to young people, seeing the young people here today, and getting their awards, and just the really great work. And I know Coach Hill was here, and I know that the coaching staff at the high school does an incredible job, along with all the activity staff. So, I'm excited about what's, those kind of things happen in Garden City. So, if you say that there's nothing to do in Garden City, then obviously, check with the school, and you'll find out there's tons of things to do. The other thing, I just wanted, I just wanted to say thank you to the city. I enjoyed the League of Municipalities, learned a lot about some of our staff, and very complimentary, even of Mike Muirhead, so. We didn't realize how famous he was until we went there, and they kept saying his name. But the way that people look at Garden City, and the, the way they talk about Garden City, one thing I thought was interesting is, they always talk about our diversity and our diverse population, and so, how is it like to live there? And, you know, until you really experience that, until you have the opportunity to meet our people, that's what I always talk about, is really meeting our people, and how we, as a community, live together and work together. And so, lots of, lots of thoughts about Garden City, and so, it's really nice to be an ambassador and talk about, hey, these are the great things that we're doing here. So, anytime you're somewhere and you say you're from Garden City, I'm going to tell you, people have questions about us. And so, it's, it's powerful to have them, to have them learn some of the great things that are happening. So, I just wanted to say thank you for sending, allowing us to go to that. It was, I think it's a powerful place to really learn a lot about, not only the work we're doing, but the work that we can do as a, as a, as a commission. I also want to thank fellow commissioners. I know that the work we do is, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and I appreciate staff being patient. You ask lots of questions, and like with Mary coming today, I, I talked with, I met Mary once before, but had no clue of the incredible job that she did. And so, I think, being able to ask those questions, get that information ahead of time, so that we, as a commission, can make really informed decisions, is so important. And I know it, it can sometimes put a, a kink in your day of what you already have scheduled. So, I just wanted to say thank you upfront.
Commissioner Burns.
Well, I would say the same. I had the opportunity to attend the league meeting this weekend. I'd like to thank the city for sponsoring me to go. It was a very informative experience, very, very, I would echo what Troy is saying, in that it's very nice to walk around and be looked at as a leader, just because you're representing Garden City, and that's a tribute to our staff very much. And congratulations again to Mr. Sonnenberg, because four years of service, it's quite an accomplishment. I also had the opportunity to attend the diversity breakfast with the mayor, and again, it was a, it was a lovely experience, huge turnout. The Somali community was highlighted at the breakfast, and again, it was, it was just a really nice community event. And I'd like to thank RCDC for coming and presenting today. We have so many good groups who are doing good work here in Kansas, and again, they kind of do their work from their little office, hidden in the trees over on Ballenger. But when we talk about quality of life, and we do so so often, and we think about all the things that determine quality of life, for families who have children with special needs, and, and generally, families who need assistance with parenting, or families that don't have access to other early childhood services, whether that's Learn and Plays, or other kind of preschool and developmental kind of activities, Russell's serving those families, and, and therefore empowering our whole community. Those, we know that children that get those interventions grow up to be good, productive citizens, and there's a lot of really interesting study and data out there about the economic benefit of early childhood intervention. So, Russell is the agency that's doing that out here, and it, it really does, I, I think, contribute to the quality of life in our community, and they're worthy of our support. And so, I thank them for coming and presenting in a, in a fashion today, so that they can extol the benefits that they, they give. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Finkhauser.
I too attended the diversity breakfast, and I thought it was very good. Yeah, that's all right.
You were there, too. That's all right.
Yeah. And your son.
I was scared.
He was there. Also, I just thought the pre-meeting with Put 'Em Back Bond was very interesting, and I'm glad that Neil Holly took this project on and has done a good job about raising money for it. And if you haven't been out there, I encourage you to go out and see it. And that's all I have.
I would ditto all of the comments by our commissioners that they've already made. One item I'd like to note is to, today is the last day to register to vote in the November sixth election, so please do so if you have not registered already. I was at the I was at the Joint Legislative Task Force meeting. I was the, did the welcome, and I was the first one to put on testimony during that. A lot of interesting and good discussion, the city was represented well, as well as we put it on at the high school, and the high school did an outstanding job at hosting that event. Had a lot of good comments about the community. It's interesting, there were a lot of people on that committee that have not traveled out this far, and traveling the highways and byways gave them a better experience of what we have to deal with. Sometimes they travel two hours, but where we have to travel six to get to meetings. So it gives them a better understanding. One of the senators I was talking to actually watched our city commission meeting the night before and thought that was pretty interesting. So I thought it was interesting that somebody actually watched our city commission meeting from another town, but she thought it was really interesting, so I thanked her for that. But congratulations to all our staff and to the students at the high school. They do an outstanding job, not only the students, but the teachers and staff and coaches that push them to do a better job. And at that point, I will call for, let's go into executive session. Do you want to take a break before we go into executive session? Or just, we'll do a five-minute break, and we'll be back and do our executive session. Do we want to make the motion first?
Yeah, I think that would be good, that, that way we get the motion on.
Oh, I had one, oh, I had one more thing, I'm sorry, I had it on another piece of paper. Could we get an update on the high school parking on Labrador Boulevard?
Sure, and I think when that issue came to the commission last time, we said that we were going to kick it back to the planning commissioner, not the planning commissioner, Traffic Advisory Board. And I think Sam can give you an estimate on the timeline of that, and then maybe Ashley can give a report on the survey that, that we're going to be doing with the high school students, so.
We'll just tag Tina together. So we have a survey that we've developed to try and find out why the high schoolers are choosing to park, or their parking, rather than parking in the high school lot. I think the survey should only take between 30 seconds and maybe two minutes if they have a lot of comments that they want to fill in in that last survey option. It says, do you have any additional comments about the high school parking? It's a six, if you had to answer every question, it's a six survey question. Starts out, do you drive yourself to school? If you answer yes, the next question is where do you park? If you answer no, it's how do you get to school? Do you already drop off your, that sort of thing. So you shouldn't have to answer every question, but if you drive yourself, where do you park? The choices are Labrador Cherokee, Dean Valley Park, there's another option, or the school parking lot. If you don't park the school parking lot, why not? Then there's some choices there, everything we could come up with in my office, other things that we've heard. And then there's a other fill in the blank, and then finally, anything else you have to share about, about parking. So I'm working with Steve Norby, the principal of the high school, trying to get that out to all students at the high school, since we don't know who those 30 or 40 students are who are choosing not to park at the high school. Figured it's easier just to get that out to all students. Hopefully, we can get that done just during one high school period would be fantastic. We're doing that through Survey Monkey, saw all the answers instantaneously, be able to get those all done, and get those results to the Traffic Advisory Board for their November meeting, which we believe is.
It's November 5th.
November 5th. And then after, they've had a chance to look at that. I don't know what the next step is, Sam?
We've had that area flown once by GIS, probably going to fly again. And then we're also going to station some personnel there to count as cars come in or go out or their parking. So we need to do a little bit more work, but that's our next step. And we'll have all that information ready to go for the Traffic Advisory Committee on the 5th.
Okay. Any questions? All right.
All right, so if we need about a five-ish minute break, that would put us reconvening at.
2:40?
2:40. And the appropriate motion would be to go into executive session for approximately 10 minutes, beginning at 2:40, under the KSA 754319, the exemption dealing specifically, or generally with consultation with the body's attorney, and specifically discussions regarding contract negotiations.
Negotiations, yes.
Mayor, I'll make that motion that we go into executive session at 2:40 pursuant to KS 754319? Did I copy that correctly?
Yes.
And.
For 10 minutes.
For 10 minutes.
We really should read the entire motion. Does somebody have it?
I don't have.
That's why I wrote it out. The KSA 75-4319 is the statute, which meets the requirement to cite the statute. The general provision would be the consultation with the body's attorney, which meets that statutory requirement. The other statutory requirement is to give a specific reason, and that is discussions regarding contract negotiations. The time is 10 minutes, beginning at 2:40, concluding at 2:50. And the people in attendance would be the city manager, the assistant city manager, the city attorney, the utilities director, and the city commission.
Because if discussed in an open meeting, it would violate the attorney-client confidentiality. That is part of the motion.
Okay. There is a motion?
Second.
There is a second, any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, we'll go into executive session.